Okay, I'd like to call and order the special council meeting Monday from eighteen two thousand sixteen. Uh, please call. Here, 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 here.
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 Thank you very much, and first up is Mr. Duffy from Walsh College and or Walsh University in my and his students, uh, chemistry students, welcome.
You're welcome.
Hey, everybody, sir. Professor Davis.
We're going to get an education tonight. Council President Peters, I'd like to, I'm excited to introduce our Walsh chemistry students that we've been working with here in this spring semester. What it started out with was a, an idea to collaborate with our, with our local university and, and how can the city, city government and Walsh students, you know, work together in, in some sort of educational endeavor and also service endeavor. So, I'd like to introduce more of the presentation to Dr. Duffy and the Walsh University students on a stormwater type of project, and they'll kind of go through that in detail. But this all started with my boys down in Oxford, and they go, J D goes to Miami, and they collaborate with Oxford as with the school with doing types of programs for the students. On my way back, I'm like, why can't we do something like this? You know, so, uh, this councilman Warren, you know, was just down there with Jim. So, it's an exciting thing, so we came back, it's been in development for almost a year now, and this is kind of a version of our collaboration with the students, and so I'd like to give them the floor.
Thanks, Jim, appreciate it.
Well, thanks for having us here today, everybody, we were really excited about the culmination of this event. Uh, go to the second slide if you don't mind. This actually started when Stacy Buckner, uh, Buckshaw, she's our Director of Service running at Walsh University, uh, introduced me to Jim, and Jim, sorry, Jim and I had a great conversation about what's going on here in the city with his efforts to reduce salt output and optimize the road salting process, and so we, we got with an idea that's based on, that I, that's based on the fact that Walsh has a service learning mission. Every student on campus is involved in it, and this course that we're doing is environmental chemistry by the way, it's a senior level course for mostly chemical biologists. Got involved in a service project for the community, and that service project is what they're going to be talking about tonight. So, uh, when Jim told me what he was doing, if it got me interested, I've always been involved in environmental chemistry, and we have a class of students, I'll introduce them very quickly, do you see that? This is not both that, this is about some third of the classes who are the representative sample, who love to stand right in the side. So, this is Logan Gray, my immediate left, next to him is Morgan McDermott, they're both, Morgan's graduating actually kind of after a little, a little more year. This is Nick Durneck, and Batul, Marpada, she's also, well, she's already graduated, she's going to graduate the passion she likes to slice that side things to continue with them, she's very smart, by the way. Uh, this is Lain Helson, she's our resident biologist, and then next to her is Avery Gullife, who's also a chemist senior high man, and folks have seen her as the area. This is Curtis Leung, who are our biology faculty, who is in the biological, help, facility of the biological side of this class. And so, what I've asked the students to do, is to come up and we're going to do four roughly one to two minute components of this slide deck to give you a sense of what's going on, and then participate in the actual presentation. So, up first will be Morgan.
Thank you, Dr. Duffy. So, essentially as you said, at Walsh University, part of our curriculum to graduate is you have to take a service learning class. And being in the sciences, there's not many options because the hard sciences, it's hard to come up to the community and get involved and help everyone, especially in chemistry. So, when Mr. Davis came and said that he wanted to look at the road salt and how it affected the environment, Dr. Duffy took the initiative, and every one of our classmates got super interested in it, and he decided to take this class as our service learning course. So, essentially, we wanted to look at road salt, road salt, road salt contains, I'm so sorry, contains calcium chloride, which is known to have certain effects on the environment. So, that's what we wanted to look at, so we chose various sites throughout North Canton on the east and west sides of the city, and we chose sites that were easily available and that had public access, and we wanted to see how it affected the waterways there. So, you can see there's like eight little red dots, so those are the different sites we chose. So, some of these are laying specifically over by Hoover High School, and there's differently. Some are just ravines, some are like known water areas, some are ponds, different areas that are open to the public. So, we tested the water and it focused on specific parameters that my other classmates are going to explain, and we wanted to see the effects and how the city, if there was any trends.
Now, by the way, one of the doubts is basically because it was on private property and we didn't want to go there, but we chose very heavily salted roadways as the first approach.
Okay, so, essentially, our sampling, uh, consists of two or three samples from each site, and, uh, we basically took our samples in containers and either froze them or tested them immediately after that. They were basically ten to fourteen days apart, and we tried to make sure that the samples were as perfect as possible. That's why they're frozen, more testing. So, the essential method of how we're testing for the road salt is by the ions, which are broken down portions of the calcium chloride salt. And, uh, we measured this using ions like electrodes, which would basically tell us the concentrations of calcium and chlorate in the water. We also use other types of methods to analyze other components of the water. Uh, we also measured the pH for the samples. So, um, these are our results, and, uh, there were essentially no concerning anomalies, and, uh, yeah, they're all in E K S numbers, and we had a pretty light year of snow, so that's.
Good, that got one slide, but maybe the question, that's one little comment, what you're seeing there's an average of a lot of data. We actually measured about twenty other things as well, we didn't want to bore you with all that, but we have a lot of measures now that's across the board, that table would be actually about twenty-some things across, and we hit each site probably nine or ten samples, so a lot of data.
What were the dates of the samples?
February, March, January.
Okay, so I have to do it something.
During the summer.
Okay.
Uh, do you want some macrobiology for the first testing with the conservation biology class, which I did before Dr. Duffy's last month, Dr. Flavinger? And what we did as a class was we went out and sampled macrobiomes over sixteen, a hundred of them at the various state sites. And we did, um, yeah, it, what the macrobiomes can tell you is how clean the water is essentially. Um, so they're very, various amount of about what water they can live in, and some are could care less and they just ride anywhere. So, what we did was we, um, this is called the Shannon Diversity Index. This, um, takes the different various macrobiomes and it, uh, got various data, and the higher it is, the better off the waters are. So, it was, um, none of them are striking low, and they vary throughout the differences.
Basically, what we did, we say what above, below, storms, or outfalls, is there a difference, yes or no, and pretty much no.
So, um, basically, in conclusion here, um, as, we basically both our analysis are in two different parts, both from a chemical standpoint and from a biological standpoint. As we said before, as I've already said before, and it was a very light year in terms of road salts, there was not a lot of calcium chloride that we could really get from our data, but these were more baseline measurements, just kind of making sure that the water's clean from a normal standpoint, um, a chemical standpoint, no sort of data, and, um, more of a baseline, the same way with the biologicals of everything, uh, just very, nothing extraordinary, very average. So, other than that, it was more just kind of, more of a recommendations standpoint, so, after repeating this process for several years, we can actually go ahead and take together like, look at all the changes we have, and we do have Edgar Snowball looking at everything that when we compare it for data here. So, after several years of just constant repetition of everything we did, what everything we tested, we'll be able to put everything together and really tell, you know, how the road salt's been affecting the city more than can. Other than that, just, well, just thank you for the time and dedicating everything to kind of the opportunity to work with everybody and providing services.
That month, we have several courses in our environmental chemistry major that we hope to keep this going. So, this semester, environmental chemistry ends, but in the fall, I'm going to be doing an analogy which is focused on waterways and ecology and so. We're hoping to be able to continue working with it to collect multi-year data and get some really good comparisons. And those students love it, they get involved in the city, uh, hopefully they have the use for decision-making and consequential stuff, so, uh, thank you very much for your participation.
Thank you.
Will you use the same way of doing it then for the next several years of different tubes than maybe some of those of lifetime tubes? Will you do everything exactly the same for the same amount of time?
Yeah, same.
Same time of the year?
Same time of year, we're trying to sample in that winter window, measure a little earlier, get some data in January. Uh, the course didn't start until mid-January, so we didn't really have time to do that, but we're planning now, knowing what we're going to do. The first time out of the gates always, what do you do, how do you figure this out, what's the strategy? We've got that pretty well worked out now, so now it's just a question of repeating it and adding maybe more data points and doing maybe some more data still to get up. Yeah, that's a ton of good stuff.
Thank you.
Did you get an A in the textbook?
This was going, I go A. I said A minus.
Everybody has a sign in their life.
Yes.
They're always gonna watch the video at the side of his knee or a beer or whatever.
Bear?
Yeah, if, uh, of course, I would be able to do this without any questions, of course, our students here. On the, uh, study, what made you choose, uh, the two ions, the calcium and chloride, because that's really looking right down the salt question, right? Now, if, uh, I don't have to go back to the one slide, but you saw how like the calcium ions, you had that one, it was like three hundred and twenty. Was that like an anomaly or? What, what do you think?
That was from March.
Yeah, like, um, I remember this last sample was from the only, but like in, um, in March, typically the middle of March after the snow time, I remember when we collected. Uh, this was the first one, and then we collected in March, like two weeks, uh, sorry, April, two weeks ago, and it was very low, like four point two or six. Uh, and that's like how's the like, uh, I just follow up so this day is when you get to a plus again, that's what's different. And that was, you can see like that's going to be effective, if we keep doing it in the future, that's maybe like one of our requirements and our water.
And you normally see like a correlation between the two ions going on in that at the same time that they react differently.
Um, you mean like time or?
Yeah, like in the one slide where it showed, I think it was calcium was really high, but it didn't seem like there was much change in the chloride, is that expected?
Well, that's a physical reaction that's happening at that time, and hopefully maybe because the salt's having like, uh, new products coming out, so that's going to be more efficiency for the water, more like the calcium they own more than the chloride.
Yeah, because this year was a low year, we didn't estimate this for the lowest year that salt.
Yeah.
Could be a decade.
I think so, you still have a couple hundred thousand pounds of salt.
The calcium also binds the clay particles in the soil, so it'd be, it'd be these kind of differences between the two. The chloride is not continuing as, you know, with the calcium.
Uh, so you're going to see a fluctuation.
I mean, it's because of the nature of clay, nature of calcium and too.
So, it really probably was due to a, a salting event, we put a lot of salt and.
The real question becomes where's the go and how's it contracted the soil events, still going to the ophers, so when it gets to the ophers, that's what's supposed to do, I can raise that. Here's what we're trying to do.
Okay, this is getting very impressive. These smart, smart students.
Thank you. Well, we shall exit.
Thanks again. All right, this time we have verification visitors, uh, just a quick reminder, each speaker has five minutes. With the other five minutes, if you haven't finished, we'll ask you to take your seat, please, there will be no back and forth between, uh, speaker and council. If you want to discuss or, um, or emphasize your point further, uh, you may wait around till after the meeting to talk with us individually. So, with that being said, this time, who should speak to council, please step forward and state your name.
Took Osborne, three old southern fairer streets, how these who were people alive. A number of taxes that have been issued to businesses that have been approved by North Canton City Council over the years, but that all play were found to be unworkable, resulting in no payment of taxes, yet led to relocation or expansion in North Canton, should be a cause for concern. Members of city council should be asking themselves, were these abatements really necessary? The outdated argument is support the abatement of taxes, each and every time, a request evades that business would relocate or expand elsewhere if the abatement were not provided. A memorable quote made by Onalisa, Onalisa Vito in the movie My Cousin Vinny seems appropriate here when she says, "Well, that plan's moot." Arguing that business will relocate or expand elsewhere if a tax favor is not given as a county. In other words, the argument is moot. Specific abatements authorized by city council that prove unworkable, and yet the business of relocating or expanding in North Canton are the following. In two thousand and six, the legislation was before city council for an abatement of taxes for Dr. Suleo. Despite the fact that I made council aware of issues regarding this abatement, council nonetheless approved the abatement only to pass additional legislation and one of later rescinding the abatement. Dr. Suleo continued his investment on Main Street without an abatement of property taxes, and later opened up his barbeque coffee shop. In two thousand and seven, there were discussions to approve an abatement of taxes for the construction of a Sherwin-Williams, paste the wrong apple growth. When I asked why a twenty-eight billion dollar company needed a tax agreement, this abatement was squashed before legislation ever came up for a vote. As we all know, there is a Sherwin-Williams who are on Capitol Hill today, and amazingly, it did not require the loss of scarce tax dollars needed by the North Canton City Schools, the North Canton City Library, the Stark County Park District, or the city of North Canton. In two thousand and nine, following approval of an eviction option by owners, the Fred Dougall Mallway Grocery Company announced that they were embarking on an expansion of the store's liquor department, as well as they remodel of the entire Acquifresh Market Store on North Main Street. Amazingly, after the announcement, expansion, North Canton's Director of Economic Development, Eric Bowles contacted Acquifresh Market and offered a tax abatement. Why? And more astonishingly, this council body approved the amendment with passage of ordinance number thirty-three oh nine. Again, I ask, why? The Acquifresh Market Store had been an anchor store for twenty years in North Canton, and they were announced to expand and remodel and behave at their intention to remain in the city. This was not a clear decision on target, Mr. Bowles at the time. The recommendation from Mr. Bowles at council should now expand the city's CRA program is equally ill-advised. In my recent conversations with the Stark County Auditor's office, I have learned that Fred Dougall Mallway Grocery Company never actually received any abatement of property taxes, as the store improvements never raised the appraised values of the property, yet the business has remained in North Canton. In twenty-eleven, city council gave an industrial commercial occupancy grant to Vince Suarez for what was called Project Omega under ordinance fifty-three eleven. The Suarez Corporation never met any given requirements to qualify for any rebate of taxes. In twenty-twelve, city council approved an industrial commercial retention grant for Crowe Montgomery Clark with passage of ordinance sixty-eight twelve. This is a digital marketing firm that had operated out of the office space on North Main Street for two decades, and decided to relocate its office to the Old Victoria House on South Main Street. I am not sure how digital marketing only fits the requirements of the industrial and commercial grant, and that may be why the business never executed a grant during Crowe Montgomery Clark, ultimately never received any tax dollars that they remained in North Canton. There is no one who could say that North Canton City Council doesn't try hard to give away tax dollars needed by the North Canton City Schools, a library, the Stark County Park District, or just the city of North Canton. The past history of failed abatements seems to underscore that the abatements were not credible to the businesses as they are part of our community despite not receiving the abatement. A summary of the Ohio Community Reinvestment Area Program states, and I quote, "Ohio's CRA program was created to promote revitalization of areas where investment has been discouraged." Creation of CRA in the city is not needed, and declaring that any area of North Canton discourages investment is wholly untrue. Banks are still lending the credit for the applicants who want to build or refurbish structures throughout the city of North Canton. In the future, owners will find it difficult to do projects, schools not knowing that the city council has any tax dollars for me or corporations, and businesses that need no and earth sustain in North Canton.
Mr. Alomar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight, I would like to speak on the CRA.
Miss Clough, I guess you could stay in here.
Information on the impact of certain components of the proposed CRA on our schools. Our schools are advantated in our community. Our schools drive the working it through the state market. Our schools need better connectivity and engagement. CRA is needed in North Canton for older homes and isolated lots for new constructions to enhance older neighborhoods. Please turn to page two. In the second paragraph, the proposed legislation specifies that the CRA is created as an incentive for new residential and commercial and for rehabilitation. We turn to page three. This is a real estate bill for the apartments on North Main Street that are currently in CRA. The tax bill from the bottom of the page is tax on the land, and you will see that the tax on the land per half is four thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, of that the schools get three thousand two hundred and seventy dollars a half. The top of the page is the, what would be the tax on the building, and of course, they're abated, so there is no bill. The schools, uh, the tax would have been sixty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars per year. The loss to the schools is forty-seven thousand forty-eight per year, and the loss over a fifty-year period is seven hundred and five thousand seven twenty. I have been told that the schools will still get taxed with CRA progress. However, approximately six thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars versus approximately forty-seven thousand forty-eight per year for the schools is no comparison, in fact, is a joke. Please refer to page four. Page four is the artist's memory of the new assisted living on Apple Grove. I can't imagine the value of this complex and the loss of the tax revenue to the schools. This complex is already partially filled, so is the incentive needed, or is it some gift to develop her? Please refer to page five. This is a tax bill of an existing. This is a tax bill of an existing $200,000 loan. And you see the taxes for the half are $3,516. The schools get $1,046 of this a half. If you allow a tax for some in place, a new mini allotment and homes are in the $200,000 range, seven homes could be a loss of approximately $7,322 per year and for 15 years, an approximate loss of $195. That summit place need an incentive? I understand two of the seven months I promised without any hesitation. The neighborhood is not declining. Would the CRA be an incentive when I give to the developer? Please lend a CRA to properties and neighborhoods that we have dated. And lend a CRA to those who need incentives to either refurbish or to build. Do not give up gifts. When you get ready to bed tonight, nor brushing your teeth, looking for something to eat, ask yourself, if tonight you did your best for residents of North Canton and the schools, or did you do your best for the development? Thank you.
Thank you. Any last question to address council? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Um, no, I need to go over to the senior waiting for each gentleman. Um, today is tax day. Many of you paid your income tax to federal, state, and city, or you didn't, either where you work, or where you live, or a combination. Some say taxes are a good thing, and others try very hard not to pay any or little. My topic is taxes and ethics, and it's about the CRA. I would guess most seniors in the city are not paying income taxes. Again, where they were working, some are still paying, but probably few. And we know that those income taxes go to the general fund. What our property tax funds are fund our schools and libraries and our city services. And I think I mentioned last week, of your tax bill, two-thirds goes to the school, the remaining third goes to whatever the city gets, library, parks, and I think Miss King and Concerseki gets a bunch or a little. Most people that live here like these services that our property tax fund. The seniors expect them to. We like the smooth roads, we like our EMS, we like our police, we like our fire. So how do we intend to fund those? I think we have lobbies, and most people are willing to pay. We now are having CRAs where there are people that aren't wanting to pay. There's a difference in the CRAs between business and residential. The North Ridge Complex on North Main and the Assisted Living Complex on Apple Grove West of the Sanctuary are residential. I think they're business, but I didn't get a vote. And I think because of the zoning code, they are residential, so they fall under the residential guidelines, which means the schools get no say. They don't have to opt in or out of those. Once you grant those, the schools have no say. Also, the city has no say that they don't get those, that one-third of the property tax that's usually given to the cities. We also have existing homes versus new construction. And I, and all of you are probably in favor of the existing homes being renovated and giving a boost to neighborhoods. I've worked a long time on boosting neighborhoods with Mr. Holt. This is a good thing. The new construction is problematic. And if you have a lot across the street, down the block, and in Sabrina's space, and all of a sudden somebody builds a new house, they can get 100% on that building. Now, they still have to pay taxes, property tax, on the land. That does not go away. But they can get 100% on the dwelling, and that's where most of your property tax comes from, is the dwelling. So we're going to give up what goes for the schools, what goes for the city, and all the others. I'm not so sure that's a good thing. I know on Summit Place, I know some folks around there, that space, one man said he would have had the money to buy that lot, he would have bought it and left it the way it was. Others have said, two lots maybe, but seven? And then you're going to give them an opportunity for 100% tax abatement if they apply? That's all you have to do is apply. It's residential. You make it a CRA. You can't say no. Let's get to the ethics. All of you have run for council for some reason, probably all different reasons. I think you have an opportunity here to look at what the city might look like in 10 years, and you have an obligation to fund the schools as they should be and city services. Let's don't shortchange people that need the money, and the schools definitely need the money, and so does the city for the services that they provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Fonte, and I reside at 4415 Dogwood Circle Northwest and chairman, members of council, members of administration. About a month ago, I presented you all with a resolution in hopes that you would pass a resolution in opposition to the Trans-Pacific Partnership Free Trade Agreement. And I just have been out of state for a while since I presented it. I got there after that, so I think I presented about a month ago. And you might say this was my service project. Although I didn't go to college, I can see what these trade deals have done to this community and every community in Stark County and all across the United States. Because I do a lot of travel, and I can see it everywhere. So I haven't heard anything, and I was just kind of wondering where it was at. I'll stick around after the meeting to talk to you, and you can tell me yes, no, or what you plan on doing. To me, I think it's really not that big of a situation. I mean, I pretty much laid it all out for you. You can check the figures, the numbers, they're all realistic. So I would hope that you could work this into your busy schedule. I think it's important. You hear people talk about every community is in trouble financially. I don't have to tell you, I told this before, all I had to do was look across the street, and that's what happens in all these communities, these jobs leave. Free trade, global economy, so I would hope that you would take a look at this resolution. I know it gets a little bit dry, I feel a little bit hard reading. You know, I'm available, you can call me, I'll talk to you. And hopefully, we can come to a resolution, and you would be in opposition of it. And if not, I guess you'll just be as supportive of these free trade agreements. So I'll stick around after the meeting and talk to whoever wants to talk to me, and hopefully we can go from there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please step forward, state your name and address. All right, seeing none, before we move on to the whole business, just a quick note, Mr. Osborne, if you talk over me after I let you know that your time is up again, you will be removed immediately. We'll do, we'll keep going at it. It was in violation of the rules of council, you know it was. You continue as my perpetual chatter to speak over.
You're not flexible or reasonable?
You noticed everybody else in here adhered to the five-minute time limit, had no problem. For some reason, you think what you have to say is more important than what anybody else in this room has to say.
I had about two words.
Mr. Osborne, would you like to remove yourself? I can call the police, let the record fly. He just stuck his tongue out. Mr. Osborne, you're out. You can let yourself out, hide beneath the camera here and record the meeting. But you are out, or you can wait till a police officer comes up to remove you. It is entirely up to you, and we will not proceed until you remove yourself.
Okay, ma'am. All you have to do is push this one with the red button on it.
What is done?
To turn it, and then close the door.
Okay.
Okay. On to the business. We have a motion in the second reading by title, only the second reading of order is number 33-16. So move.
Second.
Yes.
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 This is for third and final reading. If you may have any questions regarding the agreement.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on abatements? Since we're talking about abatements. The review of all ends this year, so I motion to meet up.
Second.
Yes.
Griffith.
Yes.
Cecil.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Radet.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Seven years to review by title only the second reading of the resolution number 1-16.
So move. Second.
Griffith.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Radet.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Seven years to review by title only the second reading of the resolution number 2016. The resolution will be dealing with placing a resolution by 47263 that is naming the city of North Canton as the dog would say.
Chairman, where? I'm sorry, yeah. That's your right. I'll take your time, but thank you. And then.
He's the leading in charge of this.
Well, basically, again, on the master plan's recommendation to resolve the tax in the building of the city, and we put this out there. It's been in the paper. I was on the radio, and at this point, I only remember three people that have any closure. So if anybody else has any other things against that, I think we stated with different reasons, it comes from the master plan committee, so I'm going to move forward with the second reading.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Radet.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
And Griffith.
Yes.
Seven years to a dozen, such a meeting in the resolution number 2016.
Thank you very much. And as this is a special council meeting, no other, for the topics coming forth, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. So move. Second.
Peter.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Sir Radet.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Seven years to adjourn.
Okay, we are adjourned, and I will call into, call a meeting to order of the committee meeting, committee meeting, Monday, April 18, 2016, at 7:40 PM. I've learned this all along.
Waring.
Here.
Sir Radet.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
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 Here. All right, first up, committee on economic development.
Yes, I'd like to allow speakers of the current committee, that's the type of motion we allow.
Second. Bill, Trevor, say aye.
Aye.
Both hands tied, both in character.
Eric, do you want to introduce them?
Yes. Uh, Steve, we have two guests at the request of city council, Ms. Hopkins from Tennessee DB Hart, a DB Hart firm that's done a lot of work in the past with the city of North Canton. Uh, now they're with CT Consultants, all one bigger company. And also Dan Miller is here with us tonight from Valuation Services, and I believe we passed our man a copy of Mr. Miller's report as requested by council. Eric here tonight to speak a little bit about the CRA issue and answering the question. You may have a question on the proposal to exchange.
Where wants to go first? Then we'll ask questions afterwards.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Good evening. As Eric said, I am with CT Consultants, I'm a principal, I'm transitioning into the manager of planning services position. Uh, I work with David Hart, I'm, you know, some of you are familiar with him, and I have approximately 28 years of experience with planning. Uh, but first I wanted to go over, give you my opinion or his opinion, our opinion together of David's work, our, um, ditto, a lot of the research on this opinion. And regarding community reinvestment areas, um, I would say that protection of your neighborhoods, particularly older neighborhoods and built-out communities are an extremely important public interest objective, that they bring, they rank right up there with the importance of your police and fire, and maintenance of your public infrastructure, your roads and your streets. And CRAs are one of the many tools that can be used to advance the important, this important public interest. Communities can't afford not to put protections in place and incentives in place to maintain and improve the property values of your older residential neighborhoods. And we would say as planners, it's important to do whatever it takes to assure that your older communities remain competitive in the regional market, because the housing market is regional. And when you think of your school district, that people have options to live anywhere within the school district, if the attraction to come here is the school district. So just a little bit back on my experience, worked on a number of comprehensive plans with newer and older communities. Uh, I've done neighborhood revitalization strategies, and in particular, just finished up a housing study for the city of Shanker Heights for one of their community reinvestment acts, or areas. Uh, we do a lot of zoning as well and work with the private sector, so we have an understanding of what it takes to actually have developers invest in your communities. I would also say that the remarks that represent David and myself are not singling out just what North Canton has to do or should do, but would be the same comments that would be made for all older communities, including all of the communities in Kiowa County, First Spring Suburbs. This is an important consideration for older built-out communities that are competing with where newer construction is occurring on the outer. So thinking about it from the broad sense, then, I would say all capital investments, all assets wear out. And so you have a choice, you can either fix them, or you can replace them. And so when you think about how you made that decision, there are a lot of things that enter into your decision-making, such as how long will your asset last, how, how well it's meeting your current needs, how long do you think you'll need that particular asset, how much do you like it, and what is being offered from a current model that your old asset may not have. And so similar to your purchase of a car, or your maintenance and repair of a car, deciding when you're going to replace it. Houses are similar to that, and then likewise, so are neighborhoods, that at some point you need repair in your housing, and sometimes you need redevelopment in your housing and in your neighborhoods in order to make sure that they remain competitive. And for many times, cost is a factor. And so in some cases, your decision to repair your house or to build a new house can be a matter of cost. Many cases it is. And so again, when you think about whether a homeowner is going to replace their house or invest in it and fix it up, we always have to think about what the newer models are offering, and why people would choose to stay in their neighborhood or move to a newer house somewhere else. And in many cases, those newer houses are happy. And in many cases, those newer houses are happening and larger developments on greenfield sites and sprawling areas. And so when you think of what a new house would offer, on the size of the house or a kitchen, um, a bathroom, bathroom updates, things like that, larger closets, these are things that are not always found in houses that are older. So North Canton, I think the, um, average age is 70 years old.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three years old. And so a lot of times, what people are looking for, you cannot necessarily find in those, that housing stock in an older built-out community. But there are abundant supplies of those newer housing, um, in other areas. Uh, so the concern is, though, that if you're not fixing it up, what's happening to it? And if you're not investing in it and you're not maintaining it, then it's not going to improve in value and give you those added tax dollars that you're hoping for. And so we have a rate of supply of newer houses. So you're competing, that's what you're competing against. And, um, again, I would say that it's a critical public interest objective to preserve the investments that you already have in your existing housing stock. And your public infrastructure, you, you know, cities routinely make repairs or replacements to their, your public infrastructure. And so you understand that, but housing, in a way, you could view housing, your housing stock, as the same sort of community asset and realize that reinvestment in that area is also important. And then when the market left to its own is not giving you those, people aren't fixing up their home or you're not getting the new construction, then it is, that's the time that it's important for the community to step in and play a role in trying to foster that redevelopment and reinvestment. And so what we would say is that it really is important for the community to do whatever it takes to ensure that your housing supply stays increasing in value and that it's not on the decline. Because it's much harder to re, to turn around the decline than to maintain and work to increase the value of your housing stock. When some people say that, uh, or, uh, that you can't afford it, you can't afford not to take action that helps to maintain and increase your property values. So if you give tax abatements to certain properties and they do go ahead and improve either through new construction or through reinvestment and renovation, it does help to increase the property values of the whole neighborhood or the properties in its vicinity. And so it's important to do that. And then, um, I think it's also important to remember that the tax abatements, first and foremost, are a way to attract buyers and homeowners to make those reinvestments. And so while developers, it does make it easier for a developer to, to sell a product, really what you're trying to do are attract those home buyers. And I would say too, that new construction is an important aspect of a tax payment program because many times, your new, or your existing housing stock can't be retrofitted to meet the needs of what homeowners are buying in contemporary housing markets. And so that is one way of refurbishing your, your housing market. And when a new house is built in a neighborhood and it's of the comparable size of the houses that are in the neighborhood, that house in and of itself, with new construction costs, are going to be more expensive than what the neighboring houses are, even if it were built to the same size. And so by giving a tax abatement, you are making it more competitive with what's, what's around there. I would also say, um, in terms of the communities that I know that are doing, uh, offering tax payment through the CRAs in the city of Cleveland Heights, um, that new construction is the only type of, uh, reinvestment that the city will give a tax abatement to. So they don't do tax abatements for homeowners to improve their existing houses. Because that's one of the things the city of Cleveland Heights has decided is that there are certain types of housing products that they don't now have, that using a CRA is a way of, of getting that. And then, um, just finally, uh, this whole, the, the idea of losing money, I think it's important to remember that if you don't provide certain incentives and the market isn't working and those housing, new housing developments are going elsewhere, then you're, that's where you're really losing out. Because you're not going to have that investment and that property tax 15 years from now when, when the tax abatement is up. Thank you.
Just a second, I have a question for you.
Yes.
You mentioned, um, Cleveland Heights, and they only have the CRA for new construction and not for current housing stock. That goes against almost everything that I thought this was really allowed. Can you explain again why they don't give rights on the housing stock that's already there?
Well, the, the idea is that they have found that the newer construction is what they are trying to attract. Um, I, I can't say for sure, certain why they have chosen not to apply or grant that to existing homeowners. I'm an existing homeowner. Um, and so I couldn't tell you why, but I do know that the, the places where they have granted it, they carved out where new developments is going. And then that's been their incentive to get developers to come in, re-habilitate. There was a church project that, um, they built townhouses around the church and then made the church into, um, three apartments. There are other, um, near the overlook, looking over University Circle, houses there, half million dollar houses that, that were granted in the tax bait. So I guess, you know, and that's, you would say, well, there are half million dollar houses in Cleveland Heights already, but the half million dollar houses that are in Cleveland Heights are really large and, um, energy inefficient and aren't necessarily what the people who are buying those 450, half million dollar houses near University Circle, those older houses on Fairmont Boulevard aren't providing what those, that, that, um, market, target market are looking for in houses.
Now, with our proposed map, you know, we have very little, other than sanctuary, very little open lots, um, to build on. So this is mostly going to be focused on the, the current housing stock. What is your opinion on, you know, because the, the proposed map that we have is going to be not including the sanctuary development, which would be all new development. What is your opinion on that, that we are taking that out?
And Montchell.
Well, that's, yeah, okay, Montchell, yeah.
Two areas where houses are going up and homes are being built. The only place left is the Montchell.
Yeah. So I, I guess the, the point would be that to the extent that there, that you needed to attract a new housing is how you would make that decision. Um, I suppose that, um, if you have a development and you might have one or two houses that are under construction or that are in the works, um, you may find that, that you're not going to get the rest. I, you know, it's hard to say, uh, not knowing for sure what the, um, the, what the rationale is when they were first, uh, purchased or put under contract.
I have a question about your Shanker Heights projects. Obviously, that's a community that in many ways would be somewhat analogous to ours in the sense that, um, a lot of older housing stock, not a lot of existing spaces for new rebuilds, and a very solid school system. I think that people in that community are very proud of it, shouldn't be, obviously, as we are a martial system too. What objections or concerns that they raise, the school system relative to the CRA project in Shanker Heights?
Well, the school system has come to believe that the, uh, there, there have been areas in Shanker Heights that have declined. Um, and so the schools, the school system is on board with the city's neighborhood revitalization department. But this is a, a way of encouraging people to reinvest in their house and to build new construction in those areas where they have the CRAs.
So the school system?
So the school system is in support of it, yes.
That's not a CY?
But it was not CY. There are spots that have been taken out currently.
There are about six areas, six CRAs. But, but again, it's in areas where it's not just for renovations of existing houses. It's, there's a lot of new construction that, uh, where the CRA was applied to encourage new construction. And I think the areas that they're not likely, they have extended it to is where the, the larger houses are, where the homeowners are already investing, maintaining their houses. I mean, they, they do have a sizable area where, um, there are homes, more sets of homes where they are being well-maintained.
What do you think about the homes where, you know, you said the average age is 77 years. So we have some homes that are in their 30s and 20s. And if we remove some of those along with, like sanctuary areas, Montchell areas, those homes are more, some could range 25 years, that's kind of when they all went started. In, in what you have seen in your history and in your expertise, isn't that kind of the timeframe that people, once houses have started to transfer, they say, gosh, this tile's really old, this bathroom's old? Isn't that kind of an era where they would say, this is the degree that they want to do? Wouldn't they want some of that or is it to keep them in our area or?
Well, again, it's, it's, it's how competitive your neighborhoods are with where people who want to live, move here for the school district, where they are moving. If they, if you find that they're moving into newer houses, not in North Canton, but still in the school district, that's where your concerns are in terms of making sure your neighborhoods are competitive. You're right in terms of that over a certain period of time, then your systems do need to be replaced. And for example, you know, David, David Hart was just telling me today, he's, um, he has a condo in, that's 15 years old. And his realtor told him that he needed to spend $6,500 to replace the granite countertops. Because that's what people are looking for. And so if you don't have homeowners who are constantly aware of what the market is looking for, meeting the demand of, of home buyers, then, then you end up with issues of, uh, how marketable are your, your housing stuff?
Do you see in those areas that they take advantage of rehabbing homes? Do you see them saving a lot of money on their property tax or it's ministerial to the things that they do to the home?
On a, on a rehand, um, that's a, a good question because my understanding, and maybe Mr. Miller has a better understanding of this, but my understanding is that, um, there are certain things you can do to your house, to renovate your house, that don't translate into an increase in your property values.
And I will go on to say, we were at the homeowners this past Friday, and they made that very clear to us that roofs, windows, siding, new driveways are considered maintenance, that it does not truly increase the property value of the property. Of course, unless, of course, you do all that at the time, which most people don't. If you do refund, like I did, it does not increase the, that is normal where in here I should be putting a roof on. I should be residing there 15, 20 years. I should be putting new windows on. Does not increase the value of your home. So we, the CRA would not fit in, in that sort of stuff. It's all, they mentioned it's mostly inside when you talk about that.
But if everyone in the neighborhood did that, wouldn't that increase?
Right, well, unless you want.
Yeah, just one person do it, it may not help, but if everyone did that, or a majority, I would assume that that neighborhood would be more of that, people want to live there, which would then increase the value, I would assume.
But there is a ripple effect that when people start improving their houses, it, even if it's not on the outside, if it's in the inside and you have, or you have a truck that comes in and sits in your driveway, your neighbors start to notice that. I mean, I planted flowers in my yard when my first person in my house and my neighbor, my next-door neighbor who had been there for 30 years started planting flowers in the yard and he said, this is because of you, you know? So there, there really is that sort of effect that when people are investing in their houses, then it, it's an incentive to neighbors to do the same. And, and to some extent, there's that, um, if they're doing it, if they feel confident in their, their house, that they're going to make that investment in their house because it's going to be valuable for them, then I have a certain comfort level in doing the same.
But we also don't want to be disingenuous with the CRA, make people feel like, oh, oh, we have to go put new siding and roof on and I'm going to get a boost in my property value. That isn't the case. I would just say absolutely not. I mean, they very rarely increase people's property value because of that. So they can apply for it, but it's not going to happen. So that's a little bit frustrating as far as what we're thinking as well. That's what we're looking at. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Doug.
Thank you, my name is Dan Miller. Uh, the report that, um, that we received, there was a quick one by a in the back to do my background. I'll just give you a little more background. Um, I've been a crazy for 25 years. I have two appraisal designations from the appraisal institute, M.A.I., S.R.A. I have a recognized national business valuation designation, the CBA. Uh, my work in, in real estate appraisal consulting is a lot of, um, basically not London work. I do a lot for municipalities, state universities. I have the University of Akron, Kent State, Stark State, um, Sarkome, Sarkome Order of Vision, um, Portage County, uh, other school systems, Fortune 500 companies, just as, as a background. Uh, I'm going to sort of refer to the, the report, I think, and I don't want to repeat myself or anything like that. But one of the things that I, I analyzed is, I think it's important that you analyze, and it's not just book theory, it's real world too. I talked about four factors of value, I talked about the appraisal principles, there's about four or five of them. They can relate to the CRA program somewhat in others, externalities, balance conformity. I talk about property life cycles, which is important, uh, property life cycles and the land cycles. Uh, one of the things which was mentioned previously, we do have a, or North Canton does have an older housing stock, averaging 73 years. I think the CRA program, I see typically, um, one of the advantages that the city has, they have a finite housing stock and is smaller relative to other cities in Sarkome. Maslin, Alliance, see if Canton or older cities, uh, but they have all experienced, um, a neighborhood, a property, a land use life cycle in that second phase, or there's potential for decline and decay. In my information that I gave you, I, I talked about a, a life cycle pyramid. It doesn't mean every type of neighborhood is exactly, or is similar. Each of your type of commercial properties or residential properties. On this property life cycle pyramid, again, it's, it's, it's theory, but it's also real world. Uh, we are in what I would, uh, what they define as the downside, increasing risk for an older type of property. Same thing for the, the next thing, if you see the state is in a neighborhood land use cycle. You can see the, the shape, we are in a stagnation, declining decay. You have that potential, uh, regarding older housing stock. Like I said, the advantage that North Canton has, they have a smaller housing stock relative to those other cities. So you can have more influence. I'm not saying control the market, but because of that finite housing stock that's smaller, you can have an influence. I look at the CRA program, what I've seen, this is based off my experience and what I've seen over the last probably 10 years, is you have the increased probability of stabilizing in this value and you reduce the risk of intermediate and long-term decline and decay. That's something that's happened to the other cities. When you have decline and decay, you, you have housing, uh, that is, no longer has, you build improvements, the structures don't have any more value, the land is basically deteriorating, become tear down. To me, the CRA program is probably one of the tools that the government has, and again, stabilizing and reducing the risk of intermediate, long-term decline and decay. I look at probably what I've seen with this area of the program, I look at it as probably one of the tools for like, as you see in the privacy sector, all these practices that you can utilize by government. It provides, again, increases, uh, stability, residential will see housing, reducing the risk of intermediate, long-term decline and decay. You're on the tools, which is also, uh, building enforcement, building regulations, police fire services, parks renovation. parks renovation. I used to get the CRA programs and one of those tools I can be implemented. Any questions?
Dan, talk a little bit about, one of the things that we've been able to quantify directly is the loss of the taxes for a particular incentive on a particular property. But how do we quantify the tangible associated with that new building or construction that goes relative to the broad tax base? Does that make sense? So if a new, if a new house, if, you know, Roger Elfie's building a new house on Ninth Street.
Right.
What difference, we know how much he is saving in real estate taxes, and thus the infrastructure that we talked about is losing. What does the tax base gain because the other houses around him will have comparables that are higher? Or is that true at all?
Well, if, where Ross houses is, and I know what you're talking about, you have, because they're building a construction, it doesn't mean your property's going to raise twenty percent because there's new construction. I do see that as a fallacy, but what you do gain is, and again, it can be an influence. You're seeing a brand-new property there, that influence, it does mean you're going to have, but you're going to have, there's more of the motivation, you'll see more people doing stuff to their house versus having that vacant lot there, that sort of thing. But that, regarding will everything increase because you see new construction out there? Typically, will not happen. But again, I see this more of, I guess, stability, but I don't see just because you've got a brand-new house, or I got a four-year house on my house increases you got. It's sort of like, what should I say? If you see it a lot across the street, the new houses, and the ones that are across, yours are four years old, that's different market.
Dan, explain how this works. All right. Let's say someone's building a big building, and the schools give sixty-five hundred bucks a year. Okay?
Okay.
And now we're going to give a tax incentive or whatever. Okay? Where does it stop? Where the schools, what do they get? Right now, they say they're paying sixty-five hundred bucks. Okay, now we give them an incentive, they add on, let's say. So does the school still get sixty-five hundred bucks? Does it continue to go from that point? And when does it get, when does it get determined where the schools get what at that point before that tax break goes in for the next fifteen years? Am I making sense with that understanding?
Say it again.
All that?
For a particular property or?
Let's just say it's a property, right. Let's just say someone's building a new building, and.
On vacant, on vacant?
Let's go, get a start of that. Since someone's building a brand-new building.
Okay.
When does the tax base get set for what the schools do get?
I don't know. I mean, that's a treasure question, that. I would not know. I don't get involved in when it's implemented.
Let's take an old building, and we add it on to it, make it better.
Right.
That person was paying, let's say, three thousand bucks a year. Okay? That person is still going to pay three thousand bucks a year to the schools. Let's just say that part is to the schools, because that's what we're concerned about.
Okay.
Okay, so then, the schools still get that, it's just any increase, is that correct?
Right, any, any kind of value.
We need to understand, is how people expect to get everything, and nobody gets anything more or anything?
What you don't, to me, when, I think one of the things that I look at is, again, intermediate, long-term, what you don't want to do is to see, and again, we can't control all that. I mean, if we have another, if we have a recession, there's twenty-five percent unemployment, all bets are off, but you're still better off. What you want to do is, you don't want that decline and decay, you don't want stuff, you don't want stuff sitting there that's not being paid, that goes to foreclosure. All those things went through that. You guys went through it less.
Right.
But that's, you don't, you don't want to go there where you have that housing stock, where you see the, which basically meaningful amount or noticeable amount, measured amount of decline and decay. So I look at this as stability, let's keep this housing stock at this level, let's make sure, and again, it's not what I see happening to the older cities, Canton, Akron, again, they're bigger. But, you know, a lot of the cities have problems, and a lot of those houses are probably tear down now, if you look at it.
Do you, Dan, do you think we should include new construction or not? What's your advice?
I haven't really thought of that, because my analysis was based off of, generally, I do know new construction, I, I, those are tough houses. And I don't do residential anymore, I do consulting, I do occasionally a big renovation case or something like that. New construction is very difficult nowadays to appraisal to a market value. And the reason that is, is we have seen, since we had the economic crash recession, two thousand eight, housing values generally from that point in time, we had a decrease of probably anywhere from twenty-five to forty percent, depending on that market. New construction, that didn't take a twenty-five percent, forty percent dive. What it took was every year, we had cost increases in materials, and especially in some years, we had shortages of drywall and that sort of thing. So if you really, and a lot of people, is that really true? It's true. I mean, if you have a house, we've had two or three percent increase in cost in construction, and you have something that's competitive, that's maybe ten years old, that's dropped twenty-five to forty percent, and has regained, but it hasn't regained twenty-five to forty percent yet, maybe half of that. Do you see a, you do see a difference regarding what that thing costs, the land versus something newer that's competitive that's maybe ten years old?
Well, you, based on your knowledge, that, you know, we do have, we're very fortunate to have a healthy desire of a place to live here, and based on the amount of new homes that, and the housing stock is very low here, would those houses sell anyways, those newer homes that are going in this part of the area without a, in your opinion?
I, my opinion is of regarding new construction, I don't know if it really, this would apply from new construction. When the new construction house, it's going to be valued, I would say, probably closer to cost, I think, that sort of thing. One of the things with new construction too, we have, if you look at the demographics of this county, I think we're a million population for the whole county, well, it's about three hundred and seventy-five. If you look at the projections over the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, it's not going to stay at three seventy-five. They're predicting, I think, about three hundred and fifty-six, something like that. The other thing is, what has happened too is, we have baby boomers, that's it, I'm done. I'm not going to own anymore. You're going to rent, you're going to do a condo, that sort of thing. Then they've done that. You have millennials that if you're doing okay, you have a good job, they don't want to be homeless right now. They want best freedom, and they don't want the babies. I see that all the time. If you go to Columbus, you go to Cincinnati, Cleveland, what's in vogue is apartments, semi-luxury, luxury. That's where it's at right now. So if you look at, again, appraisal principle of demand and supply, I think you're going to have potential for the decline and decay, just based off those demographics. We don't see new people coming in here. I mean, this is, we're not in a whole area. Like I said, the projections are that we are, we are going to go slightly down. And housing, it's not what it was in the nineties. Will it ever come back? I don't think it's going to be that. I don't think it's going to be exactly the way it was in the nineties and the early two thousands. So you have, like I say, I think even when you look at all these factors, demographics, I think there's more potential, again, if you're proactive in using one of those tools or rest practices and the housing stock.
Dan, I have a question for all of the councilmen, the councilmen who keep thinking about, I mean, with the auditors and some other members here. Do you find that true that if you put a roof on or siding your house? I guess it depends how much you're doing at one time. I think that's a good point. Because we were looking at, you know, if someone does that in positive, replace the windows, siding, spent, you know, spent four or five hundred dollars, we got, we're discussing fifteen hundred dollars. Do you see, you don't see the appraisal, we don't watch on that, less, it's a, it's a more rehab, you know, of some stature of money, let's say thirty, forty thousand dollars? What's your opinion on that?
Well, let's, I think what you want to do, let's try not to talk in some general terms, because every factor circumstance is going to be different for each parcel of property real estate. Let's assume, here, move-in condition housing, move-in condition, I mean, everything's been, let's say you have a forty-year-old house, everything's been done to it. Roof is newer, furnace is in, you got replacement windows, the kitchen is remodeled, the bathroom's remodeled, that buyer comes in, he knows in the next ten years, he shouldn't have to spend on anything. Those are always in demand, those are always a good top dollar. That will never, I would say, go. All you have to do is, market value, you have to define market value. Market value, most definitions of market value would be the most probable selling price, buyer and seller, reasonable knowledge of the facts, exposed to market, reasonable model of time, not asylum, duress, unstimulus, exposed to market, and catch and cash equivalent. All you have to do is play for, role-play for a typical buyer. Not yourself, or what do you think, but just get out and use that evidence. If I have a house that is, everything is good, they put on a new roof, they spent six thousand for that new roof, I'm buying that house, hey, I don't have to put any roof on for twenty years, maybe. So you spent six thousand, will that increase six thousand? No. Will it help the marketability? Yes. Could it, could you have some incremental value in that? You probably can't. And again, it depends on the house, it depends on if it's a good neighborhood, is it secure relative to most competition? You could see an incremental value, maybe a couple thousand. But again, that's why you don't want to get into the general thing of will it increase here, increase? You've just got to look at everything. Bathrooms and kitchens, you know, typically those have the greatest appeal. People notice those most. Siding's expensive to put on. Typically, when you see the first-time home buyer, they buy a house that is wood frame, and then they pay three, four pounds here, and they say, that's costing, it's going to be fine, or maybe a little bit. So like I say, if we're here, for example, replacement windows, I think the market now is pretty much expects that. The old single pane awnings that you used to see in Ambeil all the time, I think that's probably a tough house to sell now, just because of that. And you might, I don't think you saw that twenty, thirty years ago. Electrical thirty years ago, twenty-five, thirty years ago, you could sell with the old knob and tool. You can't, I don't think, I think it's difficult to sell that house now because of technology, you know, with computers and digital and everything like that. Typical double, store windows on a single pane, those are covered itself. So, I mean, no standards, I think it went up. Those I don't think, those are covered, what should I say, increasing value. It's almost like a wet basement, like a tasty water, and I'm going to increase that. You know, people expect relatively.
So, I mean, it's what we look at, you see your favorite home company.
Exactly.
He doesn't got to speak on this.
Well, that's, I guess that's my point is, we're going to break this down, new construction versus rehab, home lot to rehab versus new construction. If you look at Home Guard Network, there's fifteen shows on there, everybody's drawn to and wants to see. They don't have a show on building a new house on Home Guard Network. They have a show on going out to Home Depot, let's tear everything out, remodel it till it looks like a new house. I think that's got to be the focus of what we're looking at here, as far as when it comes down to brass taxes on it. Because it should be about to rehab, it's not rewarding people to build new homes, in six or seven homes in a lot, or take vacant property and build new homes. If you're going to tear down an old structure and put a new house on it, there's some validity to that, in my opinion, but not the other way around. So I think we're solving, to me, we're drawing out where we need to be. It's not, Mont cell is a great neighborhood, or the other ones. They don't need, you don't need to focus, if we gave property tax, CRA, property tax to be able to do construction in those areas, what's going to draw investors down to the inner part of the city that's the historic courtesy? Similar areas where I live, we're coming for where we branch out from, City Hall.
I think the point is nothing.
Exactly. So that's where we've got to scatter dollars. It's not on the fringes where everything's taken care of itself. And those are great neighborhoods, we want them in the city. But what are we going to do in ten, fifteen years down the road? We're not helping to address the Forty-Ch Avenue area. That's my opinion. You know, breaking it down, I see it even more clearly down right there. This is where the money's going to go, and that's where the CRA should focus its efforts on, not new construction.
I have a very important question.
What are the other outside factors that maintain home values? Safety, school, what are your top ones?
Location, you didn't know that, location, location.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, if you're in a business.
I mean, we don't have a notion in front of our.
Here, listen, if you could break this down, let's see, microfactors and macrofactors. Macrofactors would be location, it would be parts recreation, distance and time factors to area amenities, support facilities, police fire protection, those are all macrofactors. Microfactors now are going to be more property specific. It's going to be maintenance, appeal, what's in style. One of the things that older houses do, there's three forms of property. Depreciation to a real property, physical, which everyone knows, one's functional, one's external. Some of the older, external are two types. There's one is economic. If, for example, if economic is if North Canton, all their employees, eighty percent was, let's say, Boeing and Boeing lot, guys are going to come. That's economic, there's nothing you can do about that. Location external is if you're next to the cross street from a factory, heavy industrial plant, that's going to impact, that's beyond the property laws, you can't do anything about that. Functional, it could be a surrecency, or a tour, it could be an annuity. Smaller closets compared to, let's say, a house built with money versus now, you have bigger closets. Typically, most people do maybe smaller rooms, that sort of thing. Is that curable, potentially? That would be a renovation type of project, I'd say, if you're going to go. Condition is a maybe, I don't know, rising typically. I mean, most people, if you see a house and it needs, let's say, you guys, you have the first maintenance, and let's say it's meaningful, let's say ten thousand, fifteen thousand, you're going to have to put into it, that's going to have less demand. Some of your typical family or single owner user purpose, they don't want that, they're not, they don't want, they don't want to do that. That's to a professional rehab group, construction guy, that sort of thing. So when, like I'm saying, when I say stability, if you, if you could keep that housing stock, where it's still attractive relative to other areas, and again, you can't keep it dangerous, how dangerous? It's almost like fencing. And I've seen it, someone puts up a fence, guess what? The next neighbor puts up. That's, I mean, you see that with fencing, probably more so with housing, but you can see with housing. When you see a light on the street, that has more potential, that you'll find potentially more light at those places, not being, this look good. So what I think, stay stability, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not saying the CRA program is something that's great, it's going to increase values and everything like that, everyone's going to have, property values going to increase. You can see some incremental increases, for sale elements that a typical buyer will react to. Your vinyl siding, that typically versus wood frame, that's probably generally going to have that hit, maybe a little, you know, three thousand. But again, it depends on the vast circumstances. I don't want to say it generally for every house. If you vinyl sided, and it's still got a lot of need for maintenance inside, that's going to put a kitchen in, because it's avocado green and it's fifty years old.
Hey, Dan, my siding's prettier than the neighbor's siding, so it's important. Prettier, is it a female?
Dave, you have a question?
Yes. So, Dan, really, what I'm trying to say is that it's really the zoning, you mean, portion.
Zoning is one of the tools that I think government has. If you.
If you were to take like, if you were to take like, let's say, a city like North Canton, and you compare it to the city, similar demographics, in another state, what would, what would you argue that the city should focus on? There should be a priority to the lights.
That's me.
The lights.
Of course.
Physical style. So what would you say this city needs to focus on to keep the housing? I mean, you know, it's like a college, CRA is one, but you say it would be, in your opinion, the three most critical factors that aren't in the car?
You want me to read? I would say, you have the, I guess you could read this on foot, you have the macro forces, the second-hand, the old neighborhoods and location, the macro forces. Just like we talked about, what neighborhoods and location, the macro forces are police and fire protection.
So that's a real critical though.
I think that's one of the ones that has an influence, police and fire protection, parks and recreation. Lord Canton has it in mainly because the linkage is not just business behind factors, the major stuff is, I mean, you got it here.
You have civil information?
Yeah. And, because we're, and that is from, from a regional shopping mall and that sort of. Those, I would say, but then you have the micro factors that, again, these are tools of government, again, in private sector, best practices, and then, million, or close to that, zoning. And in the CRA program, and in the CRA program, and again, it's not like this, it's not a quick fix where everything has been appreciated, you say, what is still, and again, smoking and things are going to remain, it's your name, it's your talk, for what's, what's this state going to be like in twenty years? Are we going to, are we going to, a good example of zoning, well, zoning, I think Houston, Texas still has those zoning. That's where you see housing worship right next to strip malls.
That's where you see that.
Housing worship right next to strip malls, that's an example of the zoning.
Chris, it's awesome, because you've done a lot of this too, so needless to question, and maybe you can answer that as well. Are there three elements, if you compare this, which you would say, when people are looking at that, these are the most important things they're looking at?
The most important elements in terms of maintaining the stability of community.
Okay.
Yeah. I would, you know, police fire are one of them, but I think in terms of what you're attracting people to, I think your schools.
I miss who I was going to say.
It's either right there. But, you know, again, when you look at your school district and if that's your attractor to why people are, most of the people that are here are here for, then they couldn't live outside of North Canton and be in the school district. No, but the parks and recreation is another one, and then the quality of your outlook as well.
No, and I'm not sure, I hope everyone knows, you know, people, they can play local, for example, thirty percent of the residents have, they play local, which is our neighboring town, should have kids in the school district. Does that affect people's interest, we got, I don't know, our campus, are we at thirty percent?
But even if you don't have kids in the school district, your, part of your rationale for moving someplace is that if it's a good school district, it's a good investment.
Okay.
To resell your house when it's time to sell.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, we appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you, very, 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 very. I'm sure you can do it.
But one other thing I'd like to add, when talking about the auditors, was how, how would they figure out what they do inside a home? Because they don't come into your home when you remodel. So we asked them, would you come into their home? If we made it part of the legislation, couldn't we say, hey, you know, hey, I'm applying, I'm putting in education into your bathrooms, I want to plug for this? The stipulation would be, the appraiser has to come into your home before you do it and after you do it. And that's the only way they can decide whether your home increases in value. Because they can only go on the outside for everything else that they do.
And that would actually encourage more rehab stuff, like you were talking about that. So if there are not, you create drive-by changes and have to your property, if you're saying, I'm going to do what's true, I think that helps, we're trying to.
That's true. I mean, we've talked about registration, more housing code enforcement, you know, I think we're doing what we can, hiring people, that's critical here. You're right, because the outside can look great, even painted up, but the inside, if you had not, if you don't have a hundred amp service and your furnace is a gravity furnace, you don't have a modern furnace, your kitchen was built nineteen twenty-seven and its cabinets are painted, and you're, you have a microwave, your countertop sits sixty, no one's going to buy that house, no one. They want it updated, they want a microwave, they don't want the microwave on, count, they don't build it. Those are modern ingredients, I think, that people are expecting now. So there has to be that criteria to look at towards CRA. I mean, if your essentials are good, your heating, your electrical, your plumbing, you're way ahead of game. The other stuff, more house maintenance, it's not, it's all just appealing, but it wouldn't work with your house outside. But those have to be done, that has to turn over, you can't handle those over, as we discussed, you can't have sixty, seventy-year-old plumbing, the bathrooms, kitchens, they're not, you're just, you're not going to get yourself, something going on. Look like, say, Home and Garden Network, where they start, where we're going with the kitchen and the bedrooms, that's, every show has that, every show. The outside, we're painting brick, we're going to hit side with a wire, we're going to tear walls out, that's what we got attracted here, that's, that's where we have to get people to buy into CRA and under grant accruals, we can figure these out down the road for projects or programs. This is just the first step, in my opinion, of what we're going to do, step two or three down the road. Then you have to find out a way to, to raise some grand dollars into, besides the property tax advantage. Our business, business, our biggest success is on forty-two minute, the structures that I've looked at and bear for the last five, six, seven years, Melody and Marion, we turned an old, older two-story that should have been torn down, maybe, and renovated and sold it for a hundred, fifteen thousand dollars, and somebody made a profit on it. That's a win, those are the wins we've got to continue to, you know, and champion. It's a win when you're building a new house in Monticello, but that's going to take care of itself anyway. What's going to happen, you're already in, maybe, sir, enter four, if we don't start addressing this now? Where's it going to be in fifteen, twenty years? If we're not tracking the people coming? I think our other advantage that we have, we don't have a lot of old two-story homes. We have it on the main floor or it's in some of the older neighborhoods, on East Mike Street for example, or so. I have, I find the last two-story on that side of the street, the rest of them are bungalows. Those are efficient houses for even baby boomers to move into. If you don't want to move into an apartment complex or a condo and we made this street, that's the next step, because everybody's on the first floor. Your bathroom, your kitchen, your bedroom, and it's very efficient housing, you know, you can maintain those homes when you're seventy, eighty years old. I don't think you're going to maintain a two-story as well, you're going to get up and laugh and, you know what I'm talking about. We have a lot of tuning here to maintain those neighborhoods the way they are. Even the ranches, some of the older ranches from the middle fifties, but those are beautiful homes, on whatever area, those are the areas we should be looking at. What we can do to entice people to modernize those and all sort of working out, that's where we're getting there.
So we're ahead, definitely we're going to be, we're not, this isn't moving forward. We're going to, we need to talk to Shaker Heights, get some legislative team, we promised the auditors, we can try to stream punishment, so that's, every county does have different CRAs, because that may be what happens, and we're trying to avoid that. So we know Shaker Heights is working on it, so we want to contact, you know, their legislative body, they are, what, their relationships, I'd be saying. So that needs to give the auditors to maintain the program, because, in the end, they have to do it, but they're not really excited about that right now. Because currently all they're maintaining is new construction, they have had to, we have issues. So they are very willing to come into homes and appraise them for an after, which I was excited to hear. Because that's what, their only, that's what the interest value of the home is going to be, not the roofs and siding, I mean, most people hope that it does, but it's been told to us it doesn't. So that's out of the question, unless it all, in my time. They certainly apply for it, but, you know, the appraiser not going to increase the value of it. So, we're going to work on that. The other issues are, you know, the twenty-five hundred, or twenty-five hundred for existing homes, fifteen or a hundred percent, right? Sometimes it's with the blood threshold, created in two units, would be our apartment buildings for a fifty thousand minimum for twelve years. And then new construction, where are we at? We know we have some new construction in the city, in the current areas, and then what current areas are we going to include? And that leads me to one more question here, as far as the sanctuary grant. Currently is in the CRA, we're not taking it out at this point, you guys all know that, not on that road. But it is going to have revenue, it is a revenue generator, it's consistently living. So what if, what are the rules as far as, how much revenue they generate as far as the schools? Isn't there a, they have to go to the schools and get permission if their payroll is a million or more?
There's, there's two components to that. The first component is the payroll during construction. And if the payroll's over a million dollars, construction, we share that with the school district. And the other, the other threshold is their payroll, if it's appropriated under presidential, there could be, you could be required to share or negotiate payroll taxes with the school district.
So what do you mean, in other instances, if there's a CRA, an owner of a sanctuary grant, go to the schools and negotiate a sort of a back, you want to take that word, that's what it is? So that way they, they contribute to computers and then they just write that off their taxes, and we do the CRA, so the schools are going to lose a little bit for fifteen years, but they're getting the computers, developers getting CRA, because they're taking the tax write-off on the computers that are efficient and making. But that is essentially what's going on, probably with the sanctuary grant, except we don't know that for sure, right, Eric?
Yes, no, not uncertain, we have to check with the state.
So they, if you leave them in the area, they can technically get a hundred percent for fifteen years, because it is a residential CRA?
I think.
They have for fifteen years, generates, you know, payroll taxes every year and the property taxes.
One of the concerns I have is the long view versus the short view. And I think we all do a really good job, all of us, I truly mean every of us, of looking at the immediate consequences of what we do. I try to weigh those.